Working and it is six o'clock. Right. So, I'll call to order the Tuesday, July 19th, Planning Commission meeting this evening.
Good evening. Chair Steve Link.
Here.
Vice Chair Natasha Bosso.
Here.
Commissioner John Dinen.
Here.
Commissioner John Stewart.
Here.
Commissioner Ben Rubin.
Here.
And that's it.
All right. And with that, any Planning Commission member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item, to be considered as to declare their conflict at this time. So, at this time, we will have public comments that are, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission Board. Comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another and under state matters, state law matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence, please make your comments directly to the Planning Commission Board.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Janie Eggers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue, Modesto. That's outside the city of Riverbank but in the unincorporated area of Santa Claus County and within the proposed project area of the River Rock development. I usually come to talk to you at your monthly meeting about things like the State of California's farmland mapping project and program where they map all agricultural property of 10 acres or larger, but tonight I'm here to talk to you about something different. I want to share with you an experience that my husband and I had on the evening of June 30th, just recently, and the next day on July 1st. I came home from work that day and it was about seven o'clock in the evening. One minute we have water out of our faucets and a few minutes later we had none. And we called a pump company who fortunately were able to come out the very next morning and help us out. And our pump, and given the length of time we lived in our home, had given out and that's not unreasonable. But what was shocking to learn was that when they went to set the new pump in our well, they had to set it deeper than they had previously. We know that because in 2020, which is just two years ago, we had the well sounded, which is how you determine depth of groundwater, and the groundwater was determined to be at 43 feet. So, in 2022, just on July 1st, when they sounded the well again to determine what depth to set the new pump at, the water level was at 47 feet. So, in two years' time, our groundwater level dropped four feet. And that's interesting because, yes, we've been faced with a drought, but we don't yet have potentially 3,300 new homes right behind our house and the new businesses that would go along with the River Rock development. So, the impacts of that are very scary to us. So, I just wanted to share that information with you. Thank you.
Evening, my name is Dan Whitstone. I live at 7728 McHenry Avenue. I live next door to the Eggers. My house was built in 66. I haven't lived there that long, but it was built to overlook that river bottom and it's just, you know, a beautiful area. And the wildlife, the prime ag land, just irreplaceable. So, again, I just want to ask you guys, you know, don't rubber stamp this thing when it comes before you, please take a look at it closely, go down, visit that area and consider it with some knowledge that you might gain. Thank you.
My name is Karen Canrato. I live on Hoag Road. Good evening. I am also opposed to the River Rock proposed housing development and I hope you very carefully consider all the implications and consequences of development. I oppose the prime, the destruction of prime agricultural land, the destruction of the water recharge area, the dissection of the water, that homes would be built on a floodplain, that there's infrastructure issues that need to be addressed, that there's a vegetarian habitat that needs to be protected, there'll be wildlife that would be displaced and to the taxpayers. The re-fogging and urban sprawl, so annexation issues will come up. You know, Riverbank already has poor quality land that is available for development and I hope that you focus in on those areas. I very strongly hope you oppose this part.
Good evening, my name is Barney Eggers. I live at 7730 McHenry Avenue. Been there for 35 years. You've heard me speak here before. I won't go through the same old points that I've made in the past. Basically, I think every impact of River Rock, which I'm opposed to, every impact would be negative. And that's my opinion. This has been out in public for one year now and in 13 months, I haven't been able to conjure up a good impact that would result from approving this project other than perhaps to the developers. The impact that my wife just spoke about with the dropping water table in two years, that's significant. We in the past have consulted with Dr. Vance Kennedy, who is a well-known local hydrologist. And, you know, I would encourage some real serious study of things like water and where's the sewage going to go and the traffic, et cetera. It's a huge project that's being proposed and, you know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't vote on it as Dan said, just rubber stamp it without really looking into every facet that this would have affecting Riverbank. Thank you.
Right, we'll now move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are to be acted upon by a single action of the Planning Commission Board unless otherwise requested by an individual Planning Commission member or members of the public for specific consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by motion of the Planning Commission Board. Item 2.1 is posting of the agenda. Agenda for July 19th, Planning Commission meeting was posted on the City Community Center Bulletin Board, City Hall North and South Bulletin Boards, Post Office, City Website and email to the library on July 15th. Item 2.2 is the approval of the agenda. This provides an opportunity for the Planning Commission or staff to recommend that any item be placed on the agenda for discussion or to adjust the proposed agenda to allow an item to be taken out of order. Do I make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Chair Steve Link.
Yes.
Vice Chair Natasha Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner John Dinen.
Yes.
Commissioner John Stewart.
Yes.
And Commissioner Ben Rubin.
All right, on to the agenda, which is item 3.1, the Architecture and Site Plan Review, number 04-2022, the Countryside 2, LGI Homes Architectural Site Plan. The project consists of architectural and site plan review for the homes proposed, five master plans, three single-story plans and two-story plans ranging in size from 1,342 to 2,215 square feet at a location at 6073 Central Avenue. Project will not have a significant effect on the environment. Architectural view of structures for approved subdivision is not a project pursuant to SEQUA guideline. And do we have from staff a presentation of?
Magic. My thing came on by itself. Thank you, Norma. So, I have the audio, but the video, the PowerPoint, I have it up on my machine.
Oh, you need to share it on?
Oh, I need to share. Yes, I have that screen up. It's not opening up. There we go. This is much easier with three screens in my office.
Yes, it is.
Go. All right. Okay, so as mentioned, this is LGI Homes California and they propose an architectural and site plan review of Countryside 2, which is that blue rectangle in the middle of the screen. You can't really see the development around it yet, but the apartments are just to the north and the north on the west side and on the north on the east side is Countryside 1. Okay, so the architecture and site plan review is for 40 single-family residences and it's located on Claus Road between California Ave and Kentucky Ave. There is a development agreement for this project. It was originally approved by council for the Hayes family in April of 2017. Then McRoy-Wilbur Communities assumed the DA in October 2019 and now LGI Homes California is in the process of purchasing the project and assuming the DA from McRoy-Wilbur. Here's a copy of the Countryside 2 final map. You can see up here, there's a basin and then the street has these little bump outs for the houses on one side and then on this side, they're just side by side on the street. And the street is Canyon Lane. The first model is called Baker and this is the A elevation. It's a little over 1,300 square feet. This is the front elevation. You can see the detail to the shutters and the roof and the doors. Another color scheme and floor plan is, or not floor plan, but elevation is Baker's C, which you can see the roof is completely different as well as the rock on the front of the building. And keep in mind as you see these elevations and floor plans that they will also be flipped. So, besides having the five plans, you're really looking at 10 because they'll be flipped and they'll look different when they are. Here's Baker's floor plan. You can see there's a couple of bedrooms in the front. Mostly the bedrooms are down one side and you have the kitchen, the nook and the great room on the other side, all single-story, of course. This one's Carmel and this is elevation A. This is a little bit above 1,500 square feet. Again, single-story. And here's the B elevation for this model. This floor plan has the bedrooms separated. We have the primary bedroom on one side, the other bedrooms are in the front on the opposite side with the great room and the kitchen in the middle. The third plan is Imperial, which is a little bit above 1,800 square feet. This is the A elevation. You'll notice the pattern with the A elevation colors and materials. And then this is B, which is slightly different. And then this is the floor plan. This one actually has four bedrooms, the front ones next to the kitchen, so that could be converted to an office space. Then we have the primary bedroom with the other two bedrooms on the other side. Malibu model, this is the A elevation. This is their first two-story building and it's a little over 1,900 square feet. Here's the C elevation for it. And the upper and lower stories. This model has the great room and kitchen and nook on the lower floor and then all the bedrooms, which it's like there's four of them, are all on the second floor. And then finally, the fifth one is Stinson and this is the A elevation, a little above 2,200 square feet. And this is the B elevation for Stinson. You can see a lot of differences with the roof lines and the peaks as well as the treatment to the windows. The Stinson floor plan does have one bedroom on the lower floor and the rest of them are on the upper floor. As far as SEQUA goes, Architectural Site Plan Review is not a project pursuant to SEQUA. The project was analyzed for SEQUA during the tentative map process. So, the recommendation is to approve the Architectural and Site Plan Review for Countryside 2 for 40 new single-family dwellings. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
To open this up to any public comments at this time regarding item 3.1, the Architectural Site Plan. None online either? All right. So, we are, do we have a motion to approve the Resolution 2022-009 to approve the Architectural and Site Plan Review?
I'll make a motion to approve the Architecture and Site Plan Review. I'll second.
Okay, we'll call Chair Steve Link.
Yes.
Vice Chair Natasha Bosso.
Yes.
Commissioner John Stewart.
Yes.
Commissioner John Dinen.
Yes.
And Commissioner Ben Rubin. Okay, approve 5-0.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item, item 3.2 is a workshop for Tiny House Village to be presented by Consultantist J.B. Anderson Land Use and Planning. And this is item 3.2 for listening pleasure. Thank you, Donna. Do you want to provide like a little overview or?
Yes, yes, sorry, just trying to get this up.
Oh, that's okay.
No worries.
We'll get started once this is ready to go.
So, about two years ago, city staff acquired or was able to be awarded an SB2 grant and that grant was to focus on tiny houses and ADUs and you've seen at least three ordinances come through already. One was the ADU ordinance and then we did an administrative procedures ordinance and the third one?
We did the, what was the third one? Gosh, there's so many. ADU, administrative procedures, and we're doing an ADU design guidelines right now. So, I'll be coming back to you as well, but really I think it's only the two ordinances.
Okay, so this is a workshop. We do not have an ordinance to present to you today yet. We would like your input and the input of our citizens before providing that ordinance to you. David of J.B. Anderson has been working and doing a lot of research as to what other cities are doing and we found that there's not a whole lot out there. So, we're kind of blazing a new trail here, but we will come to you with the information that we have and hoping you can give us some guidance and make some choices for us so we can come back for, with you, come back to you with a really good ordinance to help, help us through this process. And the reason it's taken a while and it's been kind of complicated is because we have been looking at the various aspects of tiny house villages and how to incorporate it all within one ordinance. So, we've been looking at projects, we've actually been approached by people with projects for a tiny house village for sale, tiny house villages for rent, ADUs or tiny houses on church property for domestic violence victims and their families to get on their feet. And also, the city is looking at tiny house villages for transitional and homeless housing as well. So, as we come forward with this ordinance, we were hoping to kind of put our arms around all of it and have the design, have the guidelines, the development standards necessary for each of these projects to move forward. David?
Perfect, thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
That's a great introduction. You can go to the next slide. Actually, the next slide after that as well and we'll just get started there. So, anytime, anytime we prepare an ordinance for development, especially of being a new use, there's quite a bit of questions we need answered. And it's all related to development standards, where the use should be located at. In this case, this is a very special use that can go in multiple different directions and the purpose of tonight's meeting and tonight's workshop is to get some input from Planning Commission and the public on how it should be, how it should be drafted. So, what I'm going to do is kind of go over what a tiny house means, what size square footage we're talking about here and then also discuss some of the development standards that we need a little bit of direction on to get us going with drafting, drafting the ordinance. As well as I have an example that was provided by a local developer on what it may look like, what would a tiny house village actually look like with parking and how the homes would be situated on the individual smaller lots. So, what is a tiny home? So, basically, it's just a housing option that permits smaller parcels in size, which is currently allowed under the Subdivision Map Act and the city's subdivision ordinance. And then the definition of a tiny home is subjective, but generally speaking, it's a home between 150 square feet and 800 square feet. So, there are certain building code provisions that have a size definition for the tiny homes that are on wheels that you may have seen around, which is 150 to 500 square feet, but we do have some discretion on how, what size square footage the home should be, generally speaking. So, that's one of the areas that we're going to be talking about tonight. So, if you can go to the next slide, please. So, I've broken the presentation up into the types of development standards that we needed to talk about. First, zoning, where should this be located at or should we think about doing some sort of overlay district where we really pinpoint where we're going to be allowing this type of use? We're also going to talk about the entitlement requirements. You just reviewed and approved a architectural site point review. Should that be the entitlement that we require for a tiny home, tiny home village? Or should we require something a little bit more stringent with a conditional use permit where we need to really take a look at how that type of development is going to impact the neighbors or impact the surrounding area as it relates to aesthetic, traffic and things of that nature? We're also going to look at the square footage requirements that I just talked about for the actual home, the lot area standard, how big the lot should be. Right now, the city's minimum lot size in the single-family residential district is 6,000 square feet, so that doesn't really make sense for a tiny home that's 800 square feet. We want to go something a little bit smaller. And then we're also going to talk about setback requirements because right now, the city requires a five-foot setback on side, 15 or 10-foot setback in rear and then a setback up front, usually 15 or 20 feet. So, with a smaller lot size, we also have to think about taking the setbacks and kind of making them smaller as well and I'll kind of go over what the building code requires too. And then off-street parking requirements, what should be the requirement there? And then also thinking about landscaping and open space requirements. So, let's go to the next size and talk about zoning. So, the city has four residential districts currently. There's a single-family residential, which is your normal 6,000 square foot lot, your duplex residential, which could be your mobile home parks and things of that nature, multifamily residential, obviously is for apartments and multifamily, and then mixed use, which allows for ground floor, upper floor, commercial alongside with residential. So, those are the four that we need to talk about. If you go to the next slide, I included the zoning map. So, anything that's in yellow on the map is your R1 district. Generally speaking, your high-density residential is going to be your lighter, I think it's the lighter, the lighter orange color and then mixed use is the pink. So, the other aspect that we need to kind of discuss is anytime you have a residence development, it also has to meet general plan density requirements as well. So, typically speaking, your multifamily residential district will also be in a higher density general plan designation as well that allows the higher density. So, depending on how the tiny home village works out, it might work in a single-family residential district if the lot is large enough or if the land is large enough and allows that much in the way of development. So, the other option, like I said before, is to take So the other option, like I said before, is to take a look at doing an overlay district. And basically, what that means is that we don't necessarily create a new use that we insert into existing zoning, uh, existing permitted use list for R-one or R-two or R-three zoning districts. We create kind of a overlay district on its own with a map that shows specifically where it would be located at. The advantage of doing that is that we can narrow down where we would allow it, and we could also use it as kind of a test case, meaning that we can go with maybe a couple areas and then see how it kind of works out over the next few years. And then the city can decide whether or not to convert that into a, a use that would be inserted in the uses listed in the R-one or R-two or expand the areas that the overlay district, um, is overlaid on, basically. So let's talk about where tiny house villages should be located at. Or I could show you the example first to kind of get you understanding of what, kind of what it would look like, and then we can kind of come back. So, and this is a workshop, so please interrupt me. Um, the point is to have a discussion on where this should be located at and the other types of development standards to help better, help us better prepare the ordinance to bring back to you for consideration.
One of the things that would make a difference in my mind would be if these tiny houses were to be purchased with permanent residence or if they would all be planned for transient or rental. That would make a large difference in how I would feel about it. Are we going to have everything? Would it be a combination?
I think the intent, and correct me if I'm wrong, Donna, is to allow both purchase and for rental. Um, I know the proposal that we've seen is for actually subdividing the lots and allow for purchase. Um, but there also could be an opportunity for, um, for, um, housing like what you were talking about before, Donna.
Donna? Oh, there it is. Um, so we do have somebody in the city who is interested in creating, uh, turning a large lot into, um, tiny houses for rent. She is a business owner and was helping one of her employees to find a location to live because the house that he was living in got sold. She spent four months trying to find him a place and ended up getting him a room in a house. And so she thought, well, I have a large piece of property. If I could have a lot of tiny houses, I would rent them out to people in the service industry in Riverbank who are having a difficult time finding a place to stay and, um, at their wages.
I think I'd like to see the example you indicated before we start talking about where we locate one of these things.
Understood. We go to the last slide, yeah. Yeah, keep in mind, this is a pretty new type of use. So we're kind of going into a little bit of uncharted territory on, on how this should actually look as an actual full-fledged ordinance. So, um, you know, all ideas are good ideas, so this is the example that we've, we've seen. So as you can see, it has a common area landscaping, common area parking. So there's no off-street parking on the individual lots, so the parking is handled much like a multifamily development. Uh, and then each tiny home is on its own separate lot. So what that means is that they would be available for sale for purchase by, by a person.
If, if I might.
Yeah, please.
So I have been discussing this project with a developer who's interested in creating it. Um, I think you've noticed that most of our existing subdivisions have usually a drainage basin and then sometimes it's a park as well because we have to take care of as much stormwater on the property as we can. So the idea for this is to have, um, pipes underneath the driving and parking area that will fill with, uh, stormwater and then percolate out underground. Um, so we'll still be able to recharge the basin. And because of the way he has this set up, it actually creates two parking spaces for every tiny house.
Okay, another question. So if those lots are to be sold, would the parking spaces be included in the sale of the property or is that?
Well, we're still kind of figuring that out, but I think if I remember correctly from our last meeting, this would actually be dedicated as a street with the parking spaces on it. So they wouldn't necessarily be dedicated to each. We have looked at example, or have started looking at examples where the parking might be on site, but then that uses up a lot of the land that the little tiny house is on. And it kind of, you know, makes the lot larger and increases the cost of a home, which I think we're trying to keep at around two hundred thousand.
And it can also be, um, a private road with a, a common area mechanism like a CCNR or HOA as well for maintenance. So there's certainly options for private and for, for public. If it's public, it does need to meet the city's standards for street width and, you know, uh, and curb gutter and sidewalk and things of that nature. So the advantage of going private is that you can, um, modify the, the width of the street to, to meet the minimum standard.
And then the fire department would have to be able to?
That's true as well.
What if they numbered the parking spots and each unit got, you know, numbered, like you get one and two? So then they would know that those are their designated spots.
That would work as well. Yeah. And that's another part of the ordinance that we need to discuss is what should the off-street parking requirement? Um, the examples or the research that I've done usually typically is one space per unit with one extra space for a guest. But, um, it's really all up to Planning Commission and Council on what, on what you guys want.
Why, why can't it mirror what a mobile home park has?
It could.
Is it that different of a development?
Not necessarily, no, that's a good point. Yeah, it could.
A mobile, a mobile home park is essentially the same thing, just not quite as small with a tiny home, but still the same concept.
Well, and the mobile home parks are typically owned by the mobile home park. They kind of rent out the space that the mobile homes are. And sometimes the mobile home park owns the actual mobile home. And a lot of times, the person living there, residing there owns the mobile home.
That brings up another subject. I was just thinking the same thing, Steve, that in a mobile home park, you've got an association, you've got managers. If you're looking at creating a tiny house village, should there be some sort of management like there is for the apartment complexes that we have over there on Cross Road? So, you know, an onsite manager that keeps the peace and makes sure everything is nice and tidy.
I've kind of envisioned this more like a condo area where there's, there's a common area, you know, that everything's uniform. But they have either HOA or the CCNRs which designate how they are, they kind of have to pay for it monthly, those kinds of things.
Yeah, certainly, even if it's subdivided, um, you can also talk about subdividing with a condominium map like you're saying. So absolutely. Um, I think the point is we want to try to make it flexible enough to kind of handle, um, the different varying instances, I would say, you know, with either being a private or, um, you know, sold individual units, you know. The city's existing code doesn't necessarily go into that level of detail. So mainly what we want to focus on are the development standards. Um, whether it includes a CCNR or HOA will be dependent on whether it's a private association. So a lot of those things kind of get handled after the fact, after the planning process.
I'm curious, this might be, you know, not where we're at yet, but are these going to be like on a permanent foundation? Or are they going to be movable to where, yeah, I mean, it could be there one day and gone the next?
My vision is that it would be on a permanent foundation. I've seen in other instances that they're on, um, mobile, like a mobile home, a mobile unit. And a lot of cities are providing right now direction on where one individual unit can go on one individual site, not necessarily like a tiny house village. So my opinion is that it should be a requirement that it would be on a permanent foundation because our, our, um, goal is to create a tiny house village that's permanent, not necessarily a transitory. So, uh, not having, you know, units come and go.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Yeah, currently too, if, uh, if someone had a manufactured home to be brought in on a insil lot, it has to be on a permanent foundation per our ordinance now, so.
Yeah.
And are they all prefabricated? Can someone come and build a tiny house on that, on the site?
I suppose that they could. Most, from what I've seen are pre, pre-manufactured, prefabricated.
The, the developer who has proposed this, uh, this tiny house village would, would construct them. They would not be modular.
Donna, you mentioned someone who has had trouble finding a place where one of their employees. Can you share with us where this lot is?
Sure, it's, it's a huge lot behind Lucky House. It'd be between Patterson and Ward's. I think that's Ward back there.
So we can go back to discuss, um, where this type of development should be located at. Uh, go back to the zoning map and then we'll kind of get in.
These would all require fire sprinklers and solar, just like a regular house?
From what, where I understand, yeah, it would. So, I mean, really, the options are, um, you know, the, I, I think the three zoning districts. Mixed use is one of those, um, requirement, as I remember the code, requires a commercial component to it, right, Donna? So.
Actually, no.
Do you think, oh, okay.
Actually, um, the, the property that is behind Lucky House, for example, is Zone CX one. And there is a part in that code that states if you have at least eight units per acre that you can file a subdivision map on it. It doesn't require that commercial portion.
Throw some fat in the fire. I'm looking at the section that I believe is unincorporated at the bottom of the map. It's in white.
Yes.
It could sure use improvement. And I don't know how much the railroad owns and how much is something that we could think about.
Actually, they're ratchets in the county and they've expressed, um, the desire to not annex into the city. But they are all on city water because of the, um, industrial plant there.
And if, if this, if a, we can always come back with additional info on, you know, what would it look like if it was just the CX zoning district? Uh, what would it look like if it was just the R-one or the R-two? So we don't have to necessarily solve everything tonight, keep that in mind. Um, this is certainly, uh, very helpful in us to develop the ordinance, but, you know, we're not in a, a major, major rush. And we can also, um, have additional follow-up meetings to, to discuss as well.
What size lots are you thinking of in setbacks?
Uh, let's move on. Yeah. Well, we'll come back to the entitlement, let's go to development standards. Okay, so like I talked about before, um, the standard for the actual size of the unit, we're thinking of limiting it to a minimum of a hundred and fifty square feet to a maximum of eight hundred square feet. Um, and this is all up to, up to Planning Commission Council on whether or not that makes sense. Um, in my mind, it does make sense because when you compare it to like an accessory dwelling unit, um, typically those are, um, the max is twelve hundred square feet. But for the most part, a lot of people go with the smaller size one to not pay the impact fees per state law, which is if it's under seven hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, but it also makes it a little bit easier to fit with the required setbacks and the lot size and things like that, so, um...
The, part of the reason we're looking at the eight hundred square feet instead of the seven hundred and fifty square feet is the developer who wants to do the tiny houses for sale had come up with a plan that was about around seven hundred and fifty square feet, but didn't like the fact there was just no storage. And so had talked about adding a small storage to the back of it, some extra square footage for bicycles or tools or something that he would want to store, but not exactly within your tiny house.
Square footage of footprint?
Yes.
So if it has a loft and a second story, that's not counted in that square footage then?
Correct.
Like the one on the bottom looks like it, it is, probably has a loft up there.
Yeah.
To me, eight hundred square feet, I have a house that's about eight hundred and forty square feet. Two bedrooms, two baths. It's a house. If you get up to eight hundred square feet, it's a house. It's not a tiny house. I would, I would recommend we drop that, it, maybe seven hundred.
Okay.
Personal opinion.
I mean, use that already established guideline, that seven fifty, that, that is already?
Well, the, the seven fifty is for ADUs. And that's, you know, the cutoff point about whether or not they have to pay system development fees or not. Um, that hasn't even been decided for tiny house villages. I mean, we're kind of breaking new ground here, so we would have to decide too. Does the city support the same type of fee structure where people under seven hundred and fifty or under eight hundred would get a break on the system development fees to try to keep the property affordable?
And that's, that's what we're trying to accomplish, is to keep it affordable.
I wonder if, um, if the living space is, say, seven hundred and fifty square feet, if it's something to be a storage space that maybe doesn't have, um, the heat and air or maybe it's not completely finished like the rest, then would, would that change anything? Or it's just based on the footprint if it's eight hundred square feet? Because, I mean, a lot of times you, there's space that's not considered, the garage space is not considered.
Living space, yes. Well, it, it's up to us. We're, we're putting this ordinance together. It's what you folks and the citizens want to see. I, I don't see why we couldn't say limited to seven hundred and fifty or eight hundred living space and a little bit extra maybe would not count.
Yeah, we could, we could clarify that storage space, um, is not counted under that square footage. That's easy to do in the ordinance.
I would also like to mention that, um, as part of this SB two grant, uh, the city went in with other cities in the county to produce those ADU plans that we're going to give out for free. In that mix of plans, which I found out today, three of them have been plan-checked already by the county. One is in plan check and then the fourth they'll have to go through before we're able to use those plans. So the, the plan sets is actually two seven hundred and fifty square foot plans of ADU, which somebody could use for a tiny village. And one is a single-story and one is a two-story. The two-story, um, actually has a one-car garage and a storage space next to it for laundry and, and storage. And then the living space, the seven hundred and fifty square feet is upstairs. So that would be options for folks too, or for our ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea, yeah. And basically, it would just allow an exception for that, because that makes sense. And also, keep in mind that the, the lot will have space for a small accessory structure for storage as well. So keep that in mind too, that there's some extra space in the lot, not just the house.
But there is another thing that we have to consider. The state says that as far as ADUs go, um, the city has a five-foot required setback, but ADUs can be four-foot, have a four-foot setback. But we need you to know that if you do a four-foot setback, the fire department's going to insist on a fire-rated wall, which is going to add cost to the project. So it's probably less money for the builder if they have a five-foot setback and not the four-foot. But in some cases, the four-foot may be the only thing that they can do because of a certain size of piece of property or a configuration of the lot. Um, so, yeah, we, we can still consider four or five, but, uh, there is that added cost.
Is that a specification in the county-designed model you, you referred to?
Well, the models aren't shown on a lot. It'll be up to the cities to, uh, to manage that part of it. This is, the county and, um, the cities are only developing the plans themselves, not the actual, um, footprint on the lot.
I meant as far as the, um, the fire-rated wall specification.
It would be up to the building inspector because it's actually a building code.
Okay.
Yes, it has to be fire-rated if it's less than five feet.
So the county would use the same fire code as us. And, um, I know those plans have been, uh, made flexible, so you can use siding or stucco, um, shingled roof or tile roof. Um, they're giving us lots of options, so, um, I will ask to see if there is a firewall included or at least some sort of directions about it.
Okay, so that makes a question. So the five-foot clearance from the lot line, so there would actually be like 10 feet total between the two units?
Yes.
You're shaking, okay.
Yes. Or if the units were put on the zero lot line, you would have 10, yeah, you would still have 10 feet, but it would be 10 feet of usable space, not five and five.
Good point, good point.
We can go to the, um, setback side since we're on that topic. So I have an image of, of what that, um, example showed.
This one?
Yeah, that one right there. So we need to consider the front, the rear side, uh, as well as if there's like a one-car garage, um, if it's on its own lot with, with that type of development. So, uh, with the side yard setback, uh, the proposed, um, the example that we received showed a zero-foot setback and then a four-foot. Uh, we were thinking a four-foot on the other side, but if it has to be a minimum of five feet, then we're going to need to do that as well. We just need to consider that, you know, with the smaller lot sizes and the smaller homes, we just have a, um, make sure that they can fit adequately on the, on the side. Then any, any, uh, if this is zero-foot and then four-feet, both sides would need to be fire-rated? Yeah, okay.
Both sides of those exterior walls?
That's correct, yeah. And the alternative is to create, is to do five-feet, five-feet, uh, but then we also maybe consider the width of the actual tiny home as well. Um, I mean, that might, that might work.
Mm-hmm.
That's something that we need to maybe go back and consider a little bit more. But we can also talk about the front yard and the rear yard. Um, right now, the city's requirement is a 10-foot rear yard setback and I think that should still be maintained for the tiny home as well. There should be enough space for tiny home as well as that 10-feet. Um, the other option is consider a five-foot rear yard setback, uh, or even maybe something a little bit, little bit stricter. But 10-feet seems to kind of be a happy medium, so you have some space back there, uh, instead of just being a really small area in the backyard. And then the front yard setback, we have, uh, I was recommending a 10-foot setback. Certainly if there's a one-car garage or a carport, we want to make sure that there's a setback for that as well, so that it's setback far enough so the car's not sitting on the sidewalk or, or the road. Um, the minimum, uh, for most cities is 18-feet, so that allows enough space for the car to get up to the lot, up on the lot, up on the driveway, uh, or a 20-foot minimum. City requires right now a 20, 20-foot minimum. That would only be a requirement when the tiny home is on its own individual lot with its own individual carport, as opposed to a more of a common area, uh, parking situation like what we saw in the example. What do you think? What makes sense for the, uh?
Personal opinion to me is I would like to see at the maximum setback that's feasible, just to make it a better quality of life for whatever folks are going to be living in these tiny homes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, I would, I would bow to staff and the consultants as far as where we, where we land on that.
I mean, even fire safety and such, having them too close, one could catch fire and catch the next one on fire and.
Like apartments or condos?
And accessibility for the fire department, I can, I can appreciate that. So I, I would rather have more space than less.
So a 10-foot rear and a 10-foot front, makes sense? And then we need to take a look at five-feet, um.
Construction-wise, it's the cost of everything, you know, it's just.
That's true, yeah.
Feet rocks and all, different thick rock and.
Well, if we were to go with the four-foot, then that would give a developer a, a choice of doing the fire, um, requirements or going to the five-foot.
Yeah, that's true.
In Austin.
We could do minimums and then depending on what they want to do as far as cost savings, they can increase it. See, the minimum that we, that we can allow is, is either the zero-foot, but it has to have a setback on the other side because there has to be emergency access to the rear yard of at least four feet. So the minimum we can do is four feet. But we can also think about doing four-foot minimums on both sides and then if the developer or builder wants to do the firewalls and do the four-feet, they can, or they go to five-feet. So it just gives them a one-foot, one-foot option.
And are we considering fencing for these plots?
That's another area that we need to, you know, discuss is what kind of fencing. Um, right now, the city just requires the, you know, wood fences for residential development at six feet in height. Uh, and that certainly makes sense, I think, for this as well, so.
Like, oh, our fence guidelines, um, I mean, yet the six feet starts at a certain.
It starts at the, the face of the house, of the sod. There's a, everything in the front yard has to be three-foot if it's solid or four-foot if it's 90% see-through. And then it starts at the front of the house and goes six feet to the rear.
And unless we're doing something special for this tiny house village ordinance, we would just reference back to the existing code, uh, instead of trying to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, well, it's just 10 feet, then you get to go at the higher fence line.
So anything within that 10-feet would have to be a reduced height.
Right.
Yeah.
Or maybe wooden fences would look too boxed in and people might prefer something more open, like a wrought iron fence that would keep their kids in or their dog in, yet show more openness, um, to the neighborhood or look more open in the neighborhood.
It might depend too on who's going to live in these units. If it's a, if we're selling them to a young family, they might want to consider it like a normal single-family residence. Whereas if it's rental units for transient or whatever, the idea of an open area between all the units makes more sense. I lived in a place in Newport, Rhode Island. They were tiny homes, they were for sailors. And, but they were single units with one big common grassy area between all of them and little tiny things all around worked perfect. So I could see a difference between transient housing, rental housing and housing of people owning. So you'd have to, I would recommend flexibility.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Allow, allow a reduced height, excuse me. Yeah, allow a reduced height, that makes sense. Um, though, and wood fencing is okay as far as material. And so, and we want to do wrought iron as well, kind of allow that.
Vinyl, vinyl fencing?
Vinyl fencing, yeah. Yeah, that's true. Okay, let's move on to the off-street parking on the next, next slide. The next is, um, you know, considering what the off-street parking requirements should be. Um, we don't know, the, the example that we provided provided common area lane, uh, common area parking. Um, but it equated out to over two parking spaces per unit. And the examples that I've seen, um, though limited, really consider the, uh, one space per unit and one space per guest parking. So we don't want to, uh, you know, overburden the development by requiring too much parking because we want to make sure there's enough land for the development and landscaping and things of that nature. But we also want to make sure that it's not underparked as well, where parking is filling out into the adjacent streets and neighborhoods and things like that. Um, with these tiny homes, um, one space seems to be, um, the norm. Um, a normal, um, off-street parking requirement for a single-family residential house is two spaces per unit. Um, this would achieve that with the guest, guest parking as well, so. It seemed to make sense when I was doing the research and wanted to bring it up to, for your consideration.
Kind of depends on the ownership of the development again, if it's all rental, so it's basically a apartment complex.
Yeah.
And that's more common to have marked spaces away from where you actually live. And if they're sold as individual lots, people would expect to be able to park on their lot. So that ownership style would kind of dictate that, I think.
Yeah, that's true. I mean, it, it's a matter of providing enough flexibility to accommodate all of those types of scenarios. And it is difficult, um, the other option is to make the requirement a little bit more strict and then allow for exceptions for certain types of tiny house villages that are for rent or for specific uses, like, uh, transient uses, as, as opposed to, um, just, uh, one flat requirement for all of them. So that's certainly something that we can consider.
Flexibility is, yeah, that's great.
Well, yeah, these, I mean, they're small, but that doesn't necessarily mean they're single occupancy. You know, there could be husband and wife or, you know, mother and 18-year-old daughter who drives, so it might be nice for them to have the two spaces.
I bring up a question, would there be occupancy requirements? Would we have to tell people we can only have two people in this housing unit?
Is that legal?
I don't know.
I don't know if you can if they own them.
I don't think we can. Uh, I know like even right now with regular houses, we can't.
For a mobile home park, you can make it 55 plus. Everybody that lives in the unit has to be over 55.
That's usually one owner for the property though, that can, um, make those types of rules. If these are for sale, um, I, I don't think we could enforce something like that.
Again, flexibility.
Yeah, flexibility. Lots to think about.
It's going to make a big difference if these are for personal ownership or if they're rental units. It's going to make a huge difference, as far as I'm concerned. If you, if you are going to purchase a small home and you're going to live there, you're going to want two parking places and you're probably going to want them as close to the front door as they can be. I don't think, I don't think common parking for, for privately owned homes would work.
Or one onsite and then one off.
Another option, yeah.
So at least they have that. Um, thinking of something else and I kind of.
Keep in mind that if it's common, uh, area parking, they can be assigned to units as well. So, um, it's common, but, you know, certain units will have a, a, a lot of number of spaces that generally, generally speaking are close to their unit, so. Yeah, it's difficult because there's a lot of different scenarios with tiny house, tiny house village, whether it's rented or for sale or if it's on the, on, uh, off-street parking located on the individual lot itself or a common area. So trying to capture that in one ordinance might be a little difficult, um, you know, but the point is, is try to attempt to allow the most flexibility to, you know, encapsulate all these different scenarios. Uh, and then, um, you know, see where we go as far as, uh, you know, proposed developments. And if it needs to be modified, it needs to be modified. So, uh, it's not, uh, it may not be the end for, um, improving the ordinance when we get there. Um, but this is a, a great, a great start, you know.
Is there a way to, like, if they're buying, you know, they're for sale and people are buying them? Um, so people don't like just buy a bunch of them and then rent them out and then jack the land up? You know, it should be just for, you know, low income or, you know, I don't know if there's a way to regulate that.
Has to be owner occupied, you can't buy.
Yeah, but I mean, you do that when you get your loan and stuff, they ask you all that.
Right.
But then people turn around and just rent it. They say, oh, yeah, it is. Then they just turn around and rent it, but it's just a lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, like.
CCAs would be able to regulate something like that?
I mean, I know the mobile home, they have rent stabilization of increasing the space rent. You know, if people are going to rent these out, they should maybe, what if we did, you know, I don't know, I mean.
I would think for, for renting or for leasing, you would want more than a month-to-month lease. I mean, we wouldn't want somebody to, like, like said, uh, get two or three of them and then rent them out as Airbnbs.
Right.
You know, we would want stable living in these homes. And I'm thinking the CCAs could, um, manage that.
Well, we could provide a minimum, uh, rental timeframe, you know, like, for instance, for ADUs, it's 30 days. Um, so that you don't have the Airbnb type situation with these tiny homes and we have more long-term rentals. But I think there might be a limit on how far we can go out. We can't say it has to be minimum of a year or 10 years or something.
Well, I could just see someone picking up a bunch of these and then renting them out and, you know, then there goes the whole idea of trying to have it affordable for people that can't afford to rent a house and miss out because someone's just going to take all of them.
Yeah, that's true.
And I, and I would, I would discourage that for another reason because you can almost always tell, driving through a neighborhood, which house is a rental property and which house is owner occupied. It makes a definite difference in the neighborhood.
You asked the question covered or uncovered, which we didn't answer as far as parking goes. And I would submit, if it's guest parking, it doesn't need to be covered. But unit parking, a carport would be nice.
Uh, if they want to add it later, they could, an option to build it after.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out how to access, I'm sorry. I've got too many screens going on here. Could you hear it?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Ian Wilber from the Corliver Community. So how are you guys doing tonight?
Good, thank you.
Good. So I just had a couple of comments or clarifications regarding, uh, the proposed tiny house village. So the, the map that was shown before is the one that, that we came up with. And so just kind of wanted to go over a couple of things for suggestion or clarification, uh, kind of what we're planning on doing. I understand that there's a few other interested parties within the city who might want to do something different. So, um, I think it would be good when writing the ordinances to specify whether, you know, it is a, you know, an owner, owner occupied or rental or whatever it's going to be. Um, but for us, what our, kind of our, our plan was, our idea is, as far as zoning goes, we would like to have a BR1. Um, ours is planned on being owner occupied and we want to make sure that, you know, we don't have any issues with buyers obtaining a mortgage. Um, and so I know lenders can look at it a little bit differently if it's not zoned as the R1. Um, we also would be building from ground up, not doing any prefabs or modulators. Um, all a single story. And as far as maintaining the, the whole area, we would be doing, uh, we'd have an HOA. Um, that way, you know, you're not going to have a lot of extra people coming and parking that don't live in the actual, actual subdivision. Um, I do believe also, just going back to kind of like the lot sizes, I'm sorry, I took some notes down as, as you guys were presenting, so I just kind of wanted to cover everything. I believe in this particular subdivision, those lots are 30 feet wide. And so with the zero lot line. And so with the zero lot line, we would, um, have ten feet on one side and then zero feet on the other side. So you have a little bit of a yard space, but it wouldn't necessarily require that, um, the firewall. And so that's kind of where, where we're at with that. So I'd be, like, so happy to answer any questions that the Planning Commission might have regarding our particular project. And I do understand that it might not pertain to, you know, other interested parties and we're great with what they want to do.
Ian, you considered fencing for this village yet?
Say it again, I'm sorry, fencing?
Yeah, had you considered any type of fencing for this?
Yeah, so we had looked at fencing. We weren't sure if we were gonna do wood fencing or, or vinyl. Um, I think vinyl would look nicer. Obviously, vinyl costs a lot more to do. Um, you know, the main, the main goal of this whole project is to create something affordable for the home buyer. With that being said, I think the wood fencing, you know, is gonna make it a little more attainable. Um, but I know the vinyl fencing lasts longer, looks a little bit nicer, so we haven't really got that far into it yet.
Thank you.
Yep.
Right, that was Ian Wilber from McCroy Wilber, who, uh, did, uh, Diamond Bar West and, um, Countryside One and California Estates. And so now they're looking to move into more of the tiny house villages, um, and moving away from traditional subdivisions. And I think she's trying to get Mark Wilber on the phone right now. Or he's muted?
Can you hear me?
Yes, is this Mark?
No, this is Ian again.
Ian, okay. I think Mark's trying to get in on another line. But to, to answer your question, this project was designed for a piece of property that's at Claws and Sierra?
Yes.
Kind of an odd-shaped piece. And, um, one of the tough parts about this project is there's really just a dirt road on Stanislaus to the north. So there would be improvements to Stanislaus, probably Claws and probably Sierra as well. On the west side of Claws, mm-hmm. Mark, can you hear us?
Not sure if he's there. I'm, I'm still unmuted on here. Um, and so kind of want to go back to the, the fencing, um, concept as well. Uh, because if you can see on the map that these lots back up to Claws Road, there's Mr. Wilber. The, um, you know, potentially, we could do, say, vinyl fencing around the perimeter of this subdivision and do the wood in between the houses if it were, uh, you know, make it look a little nicer on the exterior. So there's, we have a few different options that we can think about when it comes to that.
Thank you. I see Mark. Can you hear us, Mark? We can see you, but we can't hear you.
So much for technology. This is probably a silly question. Would this be on city water and city sewage?
Yes.
Yes.
I think he's having some issues.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions or want to broach a topic until we can get Mark straightened out?
Oh, Mark's gone.
Oh, Mark's gone, oh.
I think he dropped out.
Maybe he'll reconnect. Well, we've covered, as far as what I've presented...
We, um, if you're to the end of what you wanted to bring up to them, we could also, um, besides talking among ourselves, we can also, um, invite comments from the public here as well, since we've bringing, bringing them in online. We've, we've started talking about the zoning, um, but no decisions have been made. Do you have some comments? You're welcome to come up to the podium.
Yeah, we're coming back to that, um, but, yeah, like Donna said, a decision hasn't been made yet on where it should be located on. Um, we can discuss it now if, if you'd like, on where it should be located. Donna, if you want to go to that slide, we heard from Ian that, uh, he, he would like to see it in the R1 zoning district.
Um, that's right, the piece of property that they're, um, in contract on, that they'd like to do a project like this is currently zoned R1. And then the project that the person wants to do, the, the rentals for the service employees, um, is currently zoned CX1. Um, we've also talked about R2 and R3 as well. Um, pretty much our three, our four basic, uh, zoning areas that, uh, accommodate residential, um, excluding commercial, excluding industrial.
It will be interesting to see the community reaction to the project on Sierra and Claws. And actually, the community reaction behind Lucky House as well. But I, it, that seems like it's such a mix of residential and commercial there that maybe not as strong.
But... And, and keep in mind too, that, you know, just because we decide on where it should go or where, where the zoning should be, allow it to, to be developed, they still have to go through their own entitlement process. So, there's still a public review process, either via an architectural site plan review or conditional use permit or even a subdivision, um, you know, parcel map or subdivision map that will have to come back to Planning Commission and/or City Council. Um, so no matter where we choose, there's another, um, round of public review on the individual development.
Well, another area that we, we could look at would be Crossroads West. Now, I don't think all of the, the plots in that project have been identified yet, have they?
No, you're correct. We have, uh, three subdivisions moving forward there. And they had originally done a large lot parcel map of, I believe, it was twenty-three lots. So there'd still be twenty lots. Um, the one thing that we have to watch with, uh, Crossroads West is because they're in a specific plan, um, the, the density for the whole site basically has been approved. So if they were to take an R1 spot and flip it with an R2 spot, they could do that. But in the end, whatever we do in Crossroads West, at the end, it has to come up to the final density that was approved. So they could be creative. I mean, we could figure out ways to do it if, um, there was an interest by a developer to utilize some of those parcels.
Well, I mean, we can, we can, um, you know, allow for it in R1 and CX. Uh, I assume that seems to be the most, you know, requested. And then, um, you know, in R2, not a whole lot of sites that are zoned R2 and they're really more for the mobile home parks that are currently developed in the city. And then the R3, um, is more for the multi-family, uh, at a higher density. So it seems to me that the, what makes the most sense is the R1 and the CX zone. What's nice about the CX zone is that it allows a higher density as well. So if there's a larger development that wants to do more tiny homes in a, in a more denser fashion, then that would allow them to do it. Well, in the R1 district, they still have to adhere to the city's density requirement.
Now that I think about it, the, some of the properties that the city has purchased for, um, tiny houses for, like, transitional housing, uh, I believe is R1.
Okay.
And, um, uh, one of the churches that's interested in it is also an R1.
Okay.
For Crossroads West, with those density requirements, I'm thinking that there's likely gonna be direct assessments that are assessed on a per parcel basis. So, you know what I'm talking about, the direct assessments for property taxes?
Oh, CFDs?
Yes. So I'm wondering if that's already established and then they're, you know, it's going to be assessed. Is that something that could potentially make these unaffordable?
Well, actually, all, all types of development projects are supposed to annex into our citywide CFD. But I know that when the apartments, uh, came into the CFD, um, they had a, an argument about coming into it because of, um, they were affordable rentals. And so they were concerned that it would impact what they could charge for rent. But, um, when we, uh, sat down with, um... I can't remember the name of the group that we worked with that established our CFD. But they, we went, um, we had the, the single family and the multifamily and then the affordable. We adjusted the payments that they would have to make because it was a more affordable project. So I think where, I think the single families were around five hundred and eighty dollars a year. Um, the affordable apartments were closer to three hundred. So I think if we annex something like this into the CFD, we could be flexible and, and get those rates lower.
Okay. R1 and CX, does that sound like a good start?
I think we should just complete public comments on making decisions on the zoning.
Certainly. So we are forwarding this time for public comments.
My name is Evelyn Halbert and I live downtown for five years. And my sons are fourth generation. My family's been down here a long time.
Can you get a little closer? We can't quite hear you.
Because of the map. Is that better? Um, the map you're using, you need to get one that's more accurate. That one's not accurate. It's like two thousand and fifteen. Yeah, I don't know if it's even, it's not even, if you look at the zoning and the city codes and stuff, there was never one done there. Well, that one was done two thousand and seventeen, but they're still, they didn't stake on that one.
Right, we get our maps updated through the county GIS and they were kind of shut down during COVID. And so we haven't been able to update our maps recently. We'd like to and we're trying to. Um, so we will continue to work on that.
I see the big, huge area out there on Claws and Patterson. It's all yellow, like, all this big, all these huge R1. And it's the high school.
I'm sorry, what about the high school?
I said it's all, on that map, it says it's all R1, but it's the high school. There's a whole bunch of mixed sites like that on there. Um... Let me leave my, my place here, um... And as far as R2, because I live in R2, downtown. R2 is zoned for deflected and a second unit only. It's not zoned for mobile homes. Trade the parts, but not R2, that's R3. My que- our question I have on this thing is, you're putting it in R1, wherever you put it, can they come into an existing neighborhood, buy a house or whatever and move in? Tiny houses in there on the lot with the house they buy or take the house down and move in a bunch of them in there in the middle of this existing neighborhood?
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm really having a hard time hearing you with your mouth. I apologize.
My question is, if somebody comes into an existing neighborhood, wherever you decide to put these things, and buy the house. Can they move in a bunch of tiny houses into the property with the other house or take the house down and turn it all into tiny houses? Is that allowed?
Well, we haven't created the ordinance yet, so, um, that is something we could discuss. Um, one property I'm thinking of, there's one on Morrell that, um, no, that's, that one's zoned R3. Um, but yeah, if somebody had a large piece of property and they bought a house and removed the house and came before the Planning Commission wanting to do...
Some R1s are, are large lots. That's why I'm wondering if they could do that and right in an existing neighborhood and then you have parking problems and everything else. So I'm just wondering if they can do that or if they have to be in an empty lot or how does that work?
Well, we don't have the ordinance yet to tell you how that works, but it is something we can discuss. Um, if somebody came in and removed a house and wanted to put some tiny houses there, you're thinking like your neighbor? Is that what you're thinking? They would still have to come before us and we would have to look at the site to see if it was an appropriate site, if there was adequate room for, for what they wanted to do.
I'm just wondering if you're even gonna allow it, because I mean...
You might want to follow the project that's reported at City Council now on Project Road, where it was exi- an existing R1 plot. And the proposal is to put in a bunch of senior housing units. And this Planning Commission recommended against it, was in front of the City Council now. And if they approve it, they approve it.
Yeah.
Well, any R1 lot in the city is subject to that change by the City Council.
Okay. I just wondered how you guys thought about it, because there's a lot of R1 in a lot of different areas around here.
Again, the, the Planning Commission voted against it. We'll see what the City Council does.
Okay, because they need to take into consideration the impact. I think that was my main question. And Donna, you think you answered my other question about the specific plan areas? That applies to all the specific plan areas, right?
What about the specific plan areas? I'm sorry?
When you're talking about the specific plan areas that they had to meet, you have to meet with the specific plan areas you're set up with. You're talking about Crossroads West, yes, you're talking about specific plan out there. You have to meet with already set up in your specific plan, right?
Right.
That applies to the other specific plans in town too, right? You have to meet those.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Um... Well, you know, the next step from here is for us to put together a draft ordinance with the input that we received tonight. Um, as far as the actual zoning district, I've heard CX and R1 is being the two primary zoning districts that this would be allowed. Uh, the last thing I want to discuss is the type of entitlement that would be required for this type of project. So say if that example that we saw came in as a formal application, would the city require, outside of what the subdivision map act requires with doing a condo map or an actual subdivision map? But for the architecture, uh, the site planning, the parking, making sure it meets city standards, would we require an architectural site plan review similar to the application that you heard in earlier in tonight? Or does this warrant us taking a look a little bit more stringent and looking at a, at a conditional use permit for this type of project?
I would follow staff recommendation on that subject.
I think that, uh, staff is probably leaning... I think that, uh, staff is probably leaning to, toward architectural and site plan review. That, um, I think it's good to get it out in front of the public, to get the comments, to get your eyes on it, to, to find, uh, the good parts, the bad parts and, and work it out. It's, the very first one that comes through is, is gonna be kinda difficult, I think, for us. But, um, it's a, it's a good concept. And, uh, yeah, I, I'm thinking more architectural site plan review. Um, you can do conditions of approval, um, like ask for CCNR or, um, maybe have, um, yeah, like a HOA in there. Um, and we could work as a group on conditions of approval, things that you would like to see on a project that, um, that would make it better, you know? Um, yeah, there's a lot to think about.
Yeah. Are there any additional questions or any direction that you'd like to provide of, you know, otherwise that's been provided tonight? I think we've got enough to kinda start on a draft. Um, and like I said before, it's not, you know, it, it wouldn't be the end of the world if we brought a draft back and it wasn't to your liking. We wanted to tweak it a little bit more and then come back. So, you know, this is not, definitely not the last bite at the apple. Uh, this purpose of tonight was to see what we did, is provide direction and discussion on how this should, should work out and how it should be drafted. Uh, but the next meeting, I'll come back with an actual draft for you to review and, and see how you like it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, David.
All right, so now we are on, um, item four. Are there any planning commission? And then, uh, are there any county referral or correspondence information?
No, I don't have, uh, any county referrals at this time. But, um, I think I'll mention that, um, staff is meeting with the city of Modesto. I think it's in a week or two. They are, um, working on their general plan update. And part of that process is to reach out to neighboring cities and talk to us about what their plans are, how it meshes with ours, what we would like to see. And so we've got that coming up on our agenda, which is a good thing. Um, I mentioned already about the, uh, the ADU plan, uh, with the county. And I think that's all I have for right now. Thank you.
Sounds like that, that was staff comments as well.
Yes.
Unless you have staff comments.
Uh, no, I think that's it. Thank you.
Right then. And with that, uh, we will adjourn our July, uh, planning commission meeting.